Good evening, welcome to the Joplin Schools Board of Education meeting. This is 21st day of April. Ms. Waldo called a roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kimbrough.
Here.
Mr. Landis.
Present.
Ms. Sharp.
Present.
Mr. Steele.
Present.
Ms. Stinklin.
Here.
Mr. Wilcoxen.
Here.
And Mr. Flowers.
Here.
Can I have you all saying for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, and we have a district showcase?
Yes, I believe we have some FTC students here this evening possibly. Mr. Cravens, you want to do the intros?
Well, here comes Cheryl. I'm not going to introduce the students, but I am going to introduce Dave Rockers, Director of Franklin Technology, and Steve Reed, Assistant Director of Franklin Technology, and Cheryl Fields, Franklin Technology Counselor. And then they'll get to do all the exciting announcements and celebrations.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We do have several different groups tonight that we're going to be recognizing, so I'm going to let them get their paperwork passed around and we'll start in.
You got yours from Phil too?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to just give you just a little bit of information about Franklin Tech. As I tell people all the time, we're the best kept secret in Joplin Schools. And people laugh when I say that till they come over there and see all the exciting things that we have to offer at Franklin Tech. First, I'd like to tell you about our plant sale that's going on with FFA. The FFA plant sale started last week. We've been four days into that program. And as of this afternoon, Mr. Sawyer said we had made $3,127 worth of plants in four days. He wanted me to remind you all that you're all welcome to come by. This week, we're Monday through Wednesday, school hours until 6:00 PM. We're closed the remainder of the week. The group has someplace to go. Then all next week, we're open school hours to 6:00 PM and Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00. Lots of great things going on in the greenhouse over there at the 9 and 10 Center. Come by and see us.
Do we just stop in the greenhouse?
It's at the greenhouse, yes. He always has students in the house every hour. And he's there when he travels over to the 11th and 12th grade center. Some of our senior students are over there. Next, we have our FTC Master Chef competition. Last year, Jeff Lofting, one of our TLCs, had this great idea to have a Master Chef competition. And to start off last year, Jeff left us, but we kept it going. We thanked Shelley Tarter and Justin for keeping that going for us. We had winners. We had two guest chefs this year to be judges. That was Jason Miller from Eastern Karma and Jason Wilk. He was formerly with Red Onion. Dixie Rockers was a judge, and so was Sue the Math. They wouldn't let me come back. I guess they thought I ate too much. But the AM winners were Kelly McDonald from Carl Junction, Lexi Zamora from Circoxy, who's also a National Technical Honor Society, Reagan Lambert from Webb City, Austin Bratton from Webb City, and Jerry Chu from Webb City. We also had the PM winners, and we have one of our winners here today. We have Shelby. Shelby Ketron from Joplin High School, Haley Clark, Eric Spicer, Tiara Watkins, and Hope Margaret. They're all Joplin High School students. Let's give them a round of applause. They asked me where they even today.
Red school rising.
I like to also, I have one welding student here, but I'm going to recognize him someplace else. But our welding students, we had 100% of our welding students pass the AWS test the week of April 11th. And they are doing, Mr. Noel works very hard with that. Let's give him a round of applause. From the Business Department for Franklin Tech, we have Chancy McGowan. Chancy McGowan is a state qualifier in FBLA, a partnership with, and she qualified in the partnership with Business Report. She's also in National Technical Honor Society and National Honor Society. She has zero absences this year. She has a 4.09 grade point average.
Can you get that from your mother?
Mom would just stay home.
Shelby DeWitt, who is in DECA. She's a state qualifier in Hospitality Management. Tristan Ash, a state qualifier in DECA in the Automotive Service Management Department, FBLA and Economics. State qualifier.
Can you explain what DECA is?
Distributive Education Clubs of America.
Distributive Education Clubs of America, it's marketing.
Marketing, thank you.
And Alan Linden is here. He is the marketing instructor. It's like the kids, I'll just stay back here in the back. Edra Ali Allah, am I saying that right? I told you I mess it up. DECA, he qualified in Decision Making in DECA as a state qualifier, FBLA Business Procedures. Let's give the Business Department a round of applause. We also have one of our homeschool students. I only have one homeschool student this year. We have David Lundey.
You want to go ahead and do that?
Yeah, I'll just hand them out right now. Look at my career job, don't be out here. Make sure I get these right.
We have a few more back there. And we also have David Lundey. David's a homeschool student for us. We usually have one or two homeschool students this year, every year, in my six years I've been there. David is a National Technical Honor Society. He has zero absences and has a 4.0 grade point average. We have Skills USA winners. You have a handout that Steve passed out to you, our press release that we put out. We took 56 young people to Skills USA State Competition two weeks ago. Forty-three of them placed in the top 10. And you will see them, you will see the names listed there. But with us this evening, we have Chelsea, no, she's not here. Mary Goodson, who placed second in Leadership SA. And the red shirts are wearing the shirts of the received estate. And we really do like those. I'm getting them now.
You have to earn it.
Yeah, they'll turn it. I have to pay for mine. We have Amon Henady. Amon is a second-year national qualifier in Skills USA. He's going to, he's in telecommunication and catering. He placed fifth in Nationals last year up at Kansas City at the Skills USA Competition. He's also a state qualifier at FBLA Network Design and Help Desk. And he wanted me to tell you guys that he has earned $26,000 in scholarships to...
Lincoln University Technology.
At Technology. So, let's give him a round of applause. We have Alvin Saleem. He is a state qualifier. He has placed third in Technical Spelling and first in Architectural Drafting Information. State qualifier. When you look at this, the ones below the line do not go to Nationals. The two above the line do. We also have Dakota Witzman. Dakota's also big in our TV Production Department. He's going to Nationals and Job Skill Demonstration. He's been our Automotive Technology Department. In Kansas City. This is the last year for Kansas City. They'll be going to Kentucky next year. Let's give them a round of applause. And then we have, I've got all kinds of stuff I want you to all know. Because I want to make sure you remember when we leave here, okay? We have, last week, we inducted 67 members into National Technical Honor Society. They have to have a 3.0 grade point average or better. They have to have a 90% in their technology program. They have to have no more than four absences. So, we have quite a few today, but I have Jordan St. Clair from Webb City representing that part. He has two absences for two years of being at Franklin Tech. He's a National Technology. He fixed it. He only has one. What happens is our senior school students, they have to tell us when their student activities. If they don't, we miss them. So, he makes sure he gets that one for two years, okay?
Wow.
Yes. Alright, NCRC results. We also gave you a report on our NCRC results. That's the Career Readiness Test that we give in December to our seniors, both at Franklin Tech and at Joplin High School. Here representing that piece of it, I have Aaron Dunaway. Aaron scored two sevens and a four. That means he's going to retake the Locating Information piece, which is the most difficult piece for adults and students. And I believe we might have our first platinum out of the group. Let's give Aaron a round of applause. Aaron has zero absences for two years. He's a National Technical Honor Society. He has a 3.75 grade point average. And of that 174 you see listed there for Franklin Tech, 20 of those young people did not take the test. And we give that in December. We're only giving it to our seniors. And next year, we hope the scores are going to be even better because we'll be able to use the Career 101 program that we've contracted to have so that we can have the students to be prepared for the test when we give it in December.
Cheryl, can I add to that one real quick?
Yes.
I'll give you this other pie chart as well. That top... That top chart is the Joplin students that attend Franklin Tech. We tested it all separately than the high school did. We've got the Franklin Tech results and the Joplin High School results. And what I want you to see there is that they pretty much mirror each other, which is impressive, to say the least. I can tell you five, 10 years ago, there was a big difference in the quality of kids coming to Franklin Tech than what we saw at the high school. So, there's been a big increase there. I want to give kudos to the high school because they've actually closed the gap from the high flyers to the opposite end of the spectrum. You see a lot more kids in that silver area receiving this award. And this is the same test that they give adults to qualify for jobs in the area. So, it's very impressive. But if you'll notice in there, there's a slight increase in all the areas except for gold for the kids at Franklin Tech there. So, what we're doing over at Franklin Tech does give them a slight edge over the rest of these students. Very impressive.
Yes. Let's give all these young people a round of applause. Last week, as of today, as of today for the numbers for 2014-15, we have 407 students that will be attending Franklin Tech. That includes our senior school students and our Joplin High School students. And we're not done yet because we go in as if people change their schedules. But as of today, when I did account, it's 407 students that will be Franklin Tech students for the 2014-15 school year. We work very hard to make sure that people understand the importance of skilled labor and what we have to do to get these young people out there and get prepared for both work and for college when they're leaving us. So, I'm proud of them, needless to say.
Cheryl, is that an increase over the past year?
Yes.
What quarter are we at this year? How many students do you have this year?
385.
Good deal.
But I try to work hard and get them. Now, that only includes, that's just our trade and tech. That is including, we count all of our business classes and we count FFA and those. That's just young men and women that have enrolled in our trade and tech programs at Franklin Tech. Now, when the numbers come in, when Raymond gets done with all those numbers, we get done with enrollment, who will probably be over 1,000 young people that are taking Franklin Tech classes. That includes TV Production, our business classes, and those other classes.
I just received a postcard and mail from Franklin Tech. Is that the classes that you're counting?
No.
That's a community education.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's adult. And our awards, if you want to come by and see us, I always try to put my shameless plug in for you. Our awards assembly is April 30th. We have one that starts at 8:45 and one that starts at 12:45 in the afternoon. And I don't know, it's a lot of kids. And we had to have our NTHS presentation out for college at the Civil Rights, at the Criminal Justice Building because it was just too many people. It was full then too. So, we're excited about that. So, we don't know what we're going to do. It depends on how many kids and how many parents we say they're going to come. But come by and see us.
April 30th?
April 30th, yes.
At 8:30 and 1:30?
8:30 and 12:30.
And 12:30. And then, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any corrections or updates for the agenda?
Yes, we need to add item number 26. Joplin Schools Basketball Gym used at MSSU, please, for last year.
We're adding that to the consent?
Consent item number 26, please.
And just for clarification, that's for payment on the use of MSSU facilities for athletic programs for last, this past year.
2013.
We'll have our own facilities for this next year.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Any other additions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wilcoxen and Mr. Landis. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. And I will do the reports now.
Alright, well, we did some student recognitions already, so let's move right into another recognition tonight that we're really excited about. I believe we have Mr. Starkweather here. And if Mr. Starkweather would come forward. Mr. Starkweather was nominated several months ago for the Southwest Missouri Athletic Director of the Year, which put his name in the hat for the Missouri State Athletic Director of the Year. And last Sunday, I believe, he was honored with that award and representing Joplin Schools and athletic directors everywhere. And really proud of the work that you do and your kids. Thank you. Thank you. A few words of wisdom. I work with great people and have a fantastic secretary that made it all possible.
Alright, now we will, I don't know if you all remember, but about three or four months ago, I had named a, or asked Mike and Randy to oversee a facilities naming committee. And I'd like to have a report on that now. If I could have Mr. Starkweather and Mr. Bill Williams come up here to these chairs.
Kylie.
Kylie.
Oh, sorry, Kylie.
Kylie's coming up with them. Yep, she made it.
And she's wearing cool boots.
Thanks.
Come on, Carrie. Carrie's going to come up with them.
Dr. Sikata. If you all would relay your recommendations to us or tell us a little bit about how the committee worked, we appreciate it.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for the opportunity, first of all, to serve on the committee as a alum of Joplin Parkwood High School. It was a privilege to do that, so thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
We had several people on there. We met a couple of times as well. And so, we do have some recommendations that we would like to bring to you tonight to honor some people that have been very, very special to Joplin Schools. And so, we're excited about that. So, our first one is Dewey Combs, longtime football coach here at Joplin Parkwood and Joplin High School as well. And we would like to, our recommendation would be that we name Dewey Combs Athletic Complex at Young Field in his honor. Dewey came to Joplin as a coach in 1967 from Trenton, Missouri, where he won a state championship. And, thank you, sorry about that. And so, he came to Joplin High School from Trenton High School after winning a state championship. And he earned three state championships at Joplin Parkwood as well, as well as several Ozark Conference Championships. He was inducted into the Joplin Area Sports Hall of Fame as well as the Missouri Hall of Fame. He currently is still residing in the area. So, we're very pleased that we can recommend him to you as one of the honorees. The next one would be Marion Dial. Marion Dial, our recommendation would be Marion Dial Administration and Counseling Services at the new Joplin High School. Mr. Dial was a longtime teacher and had a long career as well at Joplin High School, or excuse me, in the Joplin School District. Began in 1932, teaching and coaching at Lincoln High School. He was also named principal at Lincoln High School in 1933 and remained in that position until 1958. He also was the basketball coach at Lincoln where they also won several state championships as well. And so, he was a very instrumental leader in Joplin history. Marion became the first African American in Missouri to be elected to a citywide or state office when he was elected in 1954 to Joplin City Council. So, again, another great person that we would like to honor as well.
And just aside, he became the first African American in Missouri to be elected to a citywide or state office when he was elected in 1954. And that's quite an accomplishment during a very difficult period in our nation's history. It's pretty impressive.
Absolutely, absolutely. Our next person that we'd like for you all to consider would be Jack Holden. And we would like to, the main entrance into the new high school, we'd like to name that after him, call it Jack Holden Way, which would enter in right off of Indiana Street into the main entrance into the high school. But Jack was born in Joplin in 1921, graduated from Joplin High School, longtime Joplin teacher, worked in the district for many, many years, but also served in lots of different capacities in extracurricular, co-curricular activities with sponsors of several things, was the voice of the Eagles for several, several years as well. I can still remember coaching. He'd be sitting up there on the stairs in the old Kaminsky Gymnasium. He was a Joplin fan through and through, but also one of our great historians. I can still also remember him back at the old Administration Building and there just recording different history and facts. We get lots of our history from him and all the time that he dedicated to the Joplin School District.
Did he go 30 or 31 years without missing a football and basketball game?
I think that's right. I think that's right.
Like 30 or 31 years?
Yeah. Amazing man, very amazing man. And then our final nomination would be Harold Thompson. Harold Thompson, we'd like to name the gymnasium at him at East Middle School. Call it Harold Thompson Gymnasium. Again, Harold was born in Joplin, also graduated from Joplin High School, and he served the district for over 35 years in a very wide variety of capacity. He was a coach, he was a teacher, he was an assistant principal, he was the athletic director as well. But not only that, he was a great man who had a lifelong passion for lifetime sports. And so, he was very instrumental in bringing youth tennis and golf programs to the city. And so, just a great, great man. So, those are our four recommendations to the board. And again, I want to thank you for the opportunity. I want to thank these people that are here with me today as well that have got an opportunity to serve on the committee.
Any other committee members have anything they'd like to say or add or?
We had to teach her a little bit about history, didn't we? We had to go back in time and teach her about who these people were. So, that was the interesting part and that was the cool part. Bill, hop in there. You was part of this group.
I thought the committee did a great job and those are great recommendations. There was a lot of deliberation and I really appreciated having people from different eras and all different schools in our school district on the committee. It really made a good, rich discussion and I think the committee did a wonderful job of coming up with some great people to honor.
I think those are four fantastic ones. Any board members have any questions or?
But at the high school, anything that was named previously, we're just carrying those forward.
Correct. That's correct. Auditorium, Kaminsky Gym.
And Young Field will still say Young Field.
Correct.
Yes, it will.
Awesome. You guys, that was a good job making choices.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we accept the recommendations.
Second. That's Mr. Landis, Mr. Kimbrough, please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes. And I would like to thank you and commend you on your work as a committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Those are four fantastic names.
Thank you, guys.
Superintendent's report.
Okay, I've got several items I want to cover tonight. The first one, really excited about, we have an issue going on. And I'd like to introduce Peggy Fuller and Sean McGrew. I think they're both here this evening. And is there anybody else joining you tonight? Okay. They've taken on a task. One of the great things about the Bright Futures Initiative is that we have a group of community leaders that when we have a challenge that needs to be overcome, that we can go to them and say, hey, we need help with this. Can we bring some resources to bear on this particular issue? And one of the things that became very apparent as we look at data, and it's always been a concern, but as we dug deeper into the data and started collecting information about our incoming kindergarteners, this idea of kindergarten readiness became a topic of conversation about whether or not our kids were coming to school ready. And one story I'll share with you really quick that kind of illustrates this. So, we had a young lady that was a high school graduate about, she graduated in 2011. And I stopped in at Starbucks one morning on the way into work, my usual 5:30 run, and caught her and we were visiting. And she had gotten married. She was a young girl. She got married right out of high school to her high school sweetheart. They had a baby together and she shared that with me and we were catching up. And I said, have you thought about enrolling your daughter or your son in Parents as Teachers? And she said, what's that? So, we got her hooked up with that. Well, the next time I came in there, I said, are you reading to that boy every day? And she looked at me funny like, what do you mean? And I said, well, it's really important. That thousand hours of literacy before kindergarten is critically important for your child to be successful in school. And she goes, oh, I didn't know that that was important at that age. I said, that's when the brain's really developing and that's your best opportunity to get your son ahead so he's ready for kindergarten. And so, I came back to the office and they had limited resources and we were able, working with the Bright Futures to pull some books together and delivered a bag to her that next morning. And every day I'd go in there, I'd ask her, are you reading to that boy? And every day she'd say, yes, I am. And the point being is that we've got some really great parents out there. Some of what we've got to do a better job of is informing parents of this idea of early literacy and working with children in an early age when those brains are really developing and are those sponges. And I tasked our Bright Futures Advisory Board with this idea of putting together a plan of some kind to roll out a full-court press approach to addressing this idea of early literacy for children under the age of five. And they talked about it, kicked around and approved with moving forward. And I'm going to just turn it over to them at this point because they're really rolling.
We are rolling. And thanks for the opportunity tonight to come talk to you all about what we're doing with Reading Matters. When Dr. Huff brought this issue to our attention at a retreat that we had with the Advisory Board, we were all just somewhat taken aback because most of us come from a background where we were read to as infants, we were read to as little children. I would imagine that most people in this room tonight are lifelong readers and have enjoyed the enriching experiences that it brings to our lives. I know that I, from the time I was a very, very little girl, some of my first memories are of reading in the afternoons with my mom. And, you know, we would have this quiet time and she would read Winnie the Pooh to me. And I still, you know, have such strong memories of that. And it's so important, I think, as children are developing brains in those first critical years between the time that they're born and when they start school, usually at around age five. So, we named it Reading Matters after some discussion. We felt that our job as Bright Futures is always to support and encourage and bring different partners together. We never want to duplicate things that are already happening in our community, as you know. And there are a lot of people out here in Joplin that are working on various pieces of early childhood literacy. So, our first goal was to get those partners together and figure out what they were doing and how we could help them and how maybe we could augment some of the things that they were doing. And we also wanted to, you know, the success of Bright Futures, and I say this all the time, is that good things happen when people sit around a table together and build relationships and know each other so that they know who can help with whatever issue that we're facing. So, we brought those partners together and we surveyed the kindergarten teachers. And we got a good sense of where the children that are coming into school, where they stand. And it was pretty frightening. We found that, and I have some flyers here for you that I'll pass out afterwards, but we found out that less than half of our five-year-olds entering kindergarten know the parts of a book and its functions. And some literally have never held a book before. They're past a book and they don't know how to open it, or they're holding it upside down, or they're opening it the opposite way. And to me, you know, that's something that we just can't accept. We can't accept that here in Joplin. And so, Sean and I are working with the rest of the Advisory Board and with a great steering committee that we've put together and beginning to address those issues. committee that we've put together and beginning to address those issues.
You know, and with Bright Futures, the thing has always been, I feel, that we look that every community has the resources necessary to be successful in supporting the kids. And it stuck out to me, one night we were doing a project with early childhood, and there was a parent with a child sitting on their lap, and the child handed the parent a book, and they had it upside down looking at it, really just trying to figure out how to go over that with the kid, and realizing that those needs are so great in our community. And so, when we dug into this, looking at all the partners, and those were the Library, the United Way, Success by Six, Parents as Teachers, the YPN. Leadership Joplin this year, they've picked it as their fundraising project, that they're going to supply books to these blue bookshelves that'll be located in different points in the community. The hospitals, I think, are a key piece because how are we hitting parents from day one at the birth of children? You know, we're averaging four thousand, forty-five hundred births a year in this community. And how are we getting those books in those child's hands early on so that they know the importance of these skill sets for these kids? And so, I think by doing this, we have, at this point, as far as we're along in the project, we've identified the players that need to be at the table at this point. Now, moving forward, we may identify as we go along. But the next steps are really, how do we pull these books together? How do we find out what are the best places to locate these for people, and what is going to be the level of access? And so, some of the things that we've been able to put out so far are some PSAs. We wanted to share one of those with you tonight. We've got some radio spots, some TV spots.
We have, we have a marketing committee that's been very active, and their charge from the very beginning was to start educating because, I mean, a lot of people don't know that we have this issue in our community. And so, the first thing we need to do is make sure that people understand that this is, this is an issue that we need to address. And so, the marketing committee got to work, they put together, they worked with all the media in the community who were very, very supportive. Radio and television spots, we have running, I hope some of you have seen some of those running on TV. And then, we have a community development, program development committee that's working hard to figure out exactly what Sean just said, how we're going to move forward getting those books into the hands of the children that need them, and at the same time, educating the parents on the importance of that thirty minutes of reading every single day. And if they can get that thirty minutes of reading with their parent, and not only the reading, but what we call in our committee the cuddle factor, I mean, the fact that you're sitting down and you're reading a book with your child, and it almost forces you to sit there and have your arms around this little person while you're reading to them. So, you can't measure what that can do to a child's self-esteem and their confidence as they're growing up. And our dream, you know, our goal is to take that less than half that are ready, that are coming into our kindergartens, and make it, you know, the highest number we can possibly make it where these children are walking into the first day of kindergarten, getting their picture taken with Dr. Huff, right? And then, knowing the parts of a book, knowing that sign recognition that they look for when they're driving down the street, and they know what McDonald's is, and all those very early literacy pieces that we're looking for. So, our dream is that we can begin to make a difference and see that number go much higher for our children here in Joplin. So, we have the PSA, Krista, if you could play it for them.
A lot of us have fond memories of nightly storytime, snuggled up against the best storyteller as we were transported to the magical world of George and his curiosity, or Sam and his green eggs and ham. But some children don't grow up with Clifford the Big Red Dog and fairy tales. Those children enter kindergarten not knowing how to even hold a book. Those same children may also have a tougher time in school as the years progress. Children with below grade level reading skills are twice as likely to drop out of school. Bright Futures wants to change this. The road to success starts on day one. Studies have shown that spending thirty minutes every day reading to a child will build that child's vocabulary, imagination, and will affect their educational success. Reading matters. We want you to give our children a brighter future. It's as simple as thirty minutes, every child, every day. The road to success starts on day one. To learn more about Reading Matters, please visit brightfuturesjoplin.org.
And that was the radio spot.
Very nicely done.
Thank you, thank you. Do you all have any questions?
So, are you putting books out somewhere for young parents to grab from some? How does that work?
Well, it's not out there yet. We have the, we have the partners at the table, we're figuring out exactly where those books need to be, we're figuring out, you know, sustainable funding for that. And one of the first things that I think we're going to do is work with this Leadership Joplin group that has decided to partner with United Way on the little blue bookshelf because they are going to be having these little blue bookshelves in pediatricians' offices and access family care and places where the population that we need to reach is going to be able to have those books, and they will have a way to, you know, get the books out in front of those children. So, it's coming very soon.
Cool.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Good job, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I think we're ready for Transportation Department's report.
Tina and Dave Pettit.
All right. I'm only going to sit here for a minute before Dave, our Transportation Director, gives his report because I just wanted to let you guys know, okay, you can't hear me, okay.
Nope, he's canning, excuse me.
Let you guys know about a couple of recent successes on the part of the Transportation Department, and give kudos to Dave and his staff and the bus mechanic. So, the first one is on our state, our yearly state inspections. We got a ninety-six percent, and that's a very good rating. So, I know Dave will talk about that a little bit more when he gets into his report. And then, another honor that we got, Joplin Schools, was given the 2014 Excellence Award by Tyler Technologies. Tyler Technologies is the company that gives us, doesn't give it to us, but provides us Versatrans, which is the routing planning software. And Dave submitted some information on that, basically how we used it post-tornado, and how integral it was as part of the planning for, you know, redoing routes and all of that. And so, he was able to accept that award personally at the Versatrans Conference in San Antonio, and I think he brought his hardware with him.
Pretty box.
But of course.
Wow.
Very pretty.
We were very excited about the opportunity to be in San Antonio, to accept that award for my great team, and as I had the opportunity to speak with other people in the transportation departments across the United States, as far north as Juneau, and as far south as just shy of the Mexican border, and had the opportunity to share with them our success and the resiliency of the human spirit that we were able to experience here in our town, and the way that we were able to use Tyler Technologies to help us get to the point from within two days after the tornado and using it to help identify our students, to helping us rebuild the routes as we move into our new building. So, we were excited to get to do that. One of the things that I heard said last week was a quote that I want to share with you. "Transportation is a single issue, but one made up of a million details." I will not share with you those one million details this evening, but do want to share with you some things that kind of give a snapshot of where we are as a department. We currently are running ninety-five buses. Three of those buses are leased still from the tornado. We will be releasing those back at the end of this current school year. We have eighty drivers, twenty-two aides. We're currently running a hundred and eighty-eight routes. As of the end of March, we had driven six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five miles since July first. That currently looks to be about ten percent less than what we drove last year. In spring, our average daily transport count listed three thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine students that we currently transport on a daily basis. Our DESI efficiency rating is one hundred point seven six. Currently, if you are under a hundred and four percent, you receive the maximum state funding. So, we are currently sitting underneath that, receiving all the money that we can from the state. This current year, some of the things that we've been able to accomplish in trying to make our department more efficient, we've been able to eliminate six special ed routes in absorbing and being more efficient in our transporting, which freed up six drivers and six buses, and additionally, six aides as well. We were able to absorb one of our East Middle School grandfather routes into regular busing. We added Wi-Fi to six buses, which seems to be going over very well. Dr. Huff actually got to experience that on his way to Oklahoma City here a couple of weeks ago. We reworked several of our routes in moving back over Christmas break for Irving, East Middle School, and Soaring Heights, which is the middle of year in a short window of opportunity. That was a fun challenge.
Impressive.
Redistricting for next year, we'll still be supplying grandfathered routes for one more year. We'll be preparing Joplin High School routes for fall and moving to a new building. We will thankfully be able to begin to eliminate so many of the shuttles that we're currently running between the nine-ten campus, the eleven-twelve campus, Franklin Tech, every field sports complex in this town, we seem to be running buses to, and we'll be excited to be able to move away from those things. Some of the things that we're looking at toward making us run more efficient, we are looking into GPS on our buses. As Tina and I learned in San Antonio, some of the awesome things that you can do with GPS on the buses as far as helping to reduce your fuel usage, reduce the amount of miles that we run, manage our time better, reduce wear and tear on our buses, help to avoid accidents, and one exciting thing that we've seen is enhancing customer service. There's even a point where you can use MyRoute on your smartphone tablet to currently find out where the bus is and how long anticipated before it would deliver to your home. Would help serve a lot of phone calls that we receive and would also help involve our community.
Every one of our buses would probably have to be Wi-Fi at that time?
They would not have to be Wi-Fi, they would, we have to be GPS.
GPS.
Yes, yes. Wi-Fi is in addition to, that you can add on top of that. We're currently looking into the cost of that and the hardware that would go on each one of those buses and then the software to run with that, which Tyler Technologies has part of that, and we're able to present several of those things and some of those ideas. We also want to continue to obtain and retain quality drivers and aides. We, as far as talking with my other cohorts across this nation, everyone seems to be experiencing driver shortage. It's not unique to us, everyone seems to be experiencing that, and so, we want to continue to work, Tina and I, with obtaining and retaining quality drivers and aides so that we can make sure that we have enough folks to be behind the wheel of those buses and transport our students safely. In closing, I'd just like to say I will be glad and excited for a new normal, which hopefully we will, well, we'll give it a year to get to that point. But moving into the new high school and the challenges with that will be exciting, but to also be able to settle in to some sort of normalcy with our transportation. So, thank you all this evening for allowing me to give you this report.
Great job. Very well done, Dave.
Anybody have any questions for Dave?
I've got one, just a point of clarity, Dave. The Highway Patrol inspection, that's gotten a little more rigorous, as I understand it.
Yes, the Highway Patrol, due to several accidents, the one that took place with the students that were going up to Six Flags.
Not our students.
Not our students, excuse me, let me, yes. Helped them take a new look, and the inspection is much more vigorous. The only, I believe, we had three buses that didn't meet expectations, but they were nothing that took them out of service. They were minor, such as roof hatches that the alarm did not sound properly and consistently. That was one of the things that came out. So, they are getting extremely vigorous, and talking with even our other district folks, they all experience it, and I would be happy with, anything above ninety percent will be recognized by the state this summer with a certificate.
Just another example, I will use Versatrans after the storm. I remember, I think it was within twenty-four hours or so, making a call to Dave and saying, hey, can you tell me how many kids, it might have been Mike and Dave both working together, I can't remember, there were so many phone calls going on at that time, but how many kids lived in that disaster zone, just trying to get a sense of the damage and how many families, you know, kids we had impacted, and the number was right at three thousand in that area. So, that was, that was good information to know.
Very beneficial.
And this, the award right there, is that this goes along with the stickers that are in our windows?
No, this one, the stickers that are in the window go along with the Highway Patrol award.
I like those.
So, they are nice looking, setting that aside. So, no, this is separate from that.
Congratulations to you and your team.
Yes, thank you very much.
Good job, Dave.
I think we have Jason here from Universal to give us an update on the high school and FTC.
Good evening. Well, a lot has happened on the side, as you can tell, since the last time we reported. I think the last meeting was the job tour, so I'll try to go quickly, and as always, if you have anything you want me to talk in more detail about, just stop me and I'll elaborate. Starting with the science wings, areas E and D, we're mostly painted out at this point. We have got, they're not really tied together in our sequence, so they're a little bit out of order in our schedule, but they're really close in finishing. We've got most of the ceiling grid in place, casework is set, with the exception to the countertops, which are supposed to arrive this week, so that will complete kind of the plumbing fixtures and allow us to kind of sequence out the last of the flooring outside of the corridors. Most of the classrooms have got carpet installed right now. The ceramic tile has been installed in the restrooms, and we're working, or the doors and toilet partitions, kind of accessories, the final finish things are supposed to start arriving for those areas this week. Area B and C, the arts wings are similar to those, the same finish level when I talk about from a temporary closure standpoint, the wings and the classrooms. We've got flooring taking place, the tiles installed. Most of the casework is set, with the exception to a few missing custom pieces, and those are set to arrive next week, so we'll button those areas out and work our ways out of the corridor and kind of close those off. And we're working through a owner turnover, kind of a phasing plan for your move-in dates with Mike now for those areas over the next couple of months. The cafeteria, we can see at this point, we've got shelled in, and when I say shelled in, we've got the exterior sheathing and stud framing in place. We're getting ready to move into the roofing. They're starting that this week, which is our number one most essential piece, our central utility plant, the kitchen, those spaces. So, the roof's getting ready to start drying in in those locations, and will allow us to set the cooling tower and make the connections, and then start our owner or our startup, our system operation for the rooftop units, and just kind of work through the test and balance procedures for each of those wings. So, that's a very key piece that we're going to be pushing really hard over the next month to bring into sequence. It got pushed to the back with some of the underground activities, but we are there now and really excited about closing that in and bringing the finishes up to speed. From a Franklin Tech standpoint, we've got the exterior sheathing in place. You can start to see driving down Grand Street now, we've got the exterior metal panels going on, so that really kind of mirrors all the way down the west side on Grand Street. We'll work our way around the building with those same box rib panels, and they'll move to the gym and start doing those, I guess it would be the east side and then the north face, or, I'm sorry, the east and west faces there for those box rib locations. The last pieces that you'll see on the exterior finish is going to be those fiber cement panels, which are supposed to arrive late May, which will button up the last of kind of the skin of the exterior building all the way around, all the way around the whole facility. But we're really excited about the, I guess, from a finish standpoint, looking at Franklin Tech, that'll come together a little more quickly with the box rib panels, and we're getting ready to move in there with the exterior masonry veneer. So, once we finish those up, essentially looking at it from the outside, it will look complete really quick. So, we're going to push over that for the next month, and by the time we meet again, it should look, from the outside perspective, pretty finished. The performing arts are area A, the last piece of our sequence. We're pushing really hard, still trying to see what we can, we can make happen with the sequence standpoint. It's the only area that's not currently scheduled for the August timeframe. We have made some good progress. We've got the steel set out through the auditorium, they're working on the long span joists in there now and the decking. We have a long We have a long sequence of block that has to work through the band orchestra rooms that we're getting started right now in coordination with some of our slabs on grade. So, we're pushing really hard on that and really optimistic about the progress. We still need a lot of, you know, good things to happen to bring that in, but we're pushing really hard to sequence some things and see how quickly we can move that forward in our schedule. From a site standpoint, you can kind of see that the parking lots on the northeast corner, there's three kind of grouped parking on the northeast corner of the site. Two of those are paved and striped. We're working on the third now. The curbs are in place, ready to start the base and get the paving moving. We've tore out the demo on Grand Street. We've got the curbs in place, all except for the hand pores that go into the storm drains, and we'll be working over the next week to fill in the asphalt paving. And likewise, starting the Twenty-Fourth Street and Ohio, those transitions and those connecting streets, getting the curbs going on that, so that we can kind of fill in everything as much paving as we have. We need to keep that sequence moving, so those are the next area that we will start. And as soon as the west side of the veneer finishes, we'll pull them off of wherever they're at and then start them on the west parking lot to get that in sequence for the move-ins. So, really, really pleased with the progress that we're making on site and optimistic about, you know, getting those things pulled in soon. So, I think for the next, oh, and the turf fields, you can start to see the fields taking shape. We've got the football and the soccer fields. The drainage course is in. The base has been established. We're actually to a point where we're ready to start the turf on the soccer field and then move to the football field. Essentially, we would like to start that this week, so we're pushing really hard to, with the weather cooperate and get started on the turf field on the soccer. Two weeks following that, we'll move to the football field and then sequence right from that into the softball and baseball. So, they're progressing a little ahead of schedule, so we're really pleased about the progress we're making on the site there as well. Tennis courts are going to start really this week. We're planning on, we were planning on starting them today, but the weather kind of pushed it back a little bit from stabilizing the soils, but as soon as it dries out, probably Wednesday, we'll have them back out and we'll get started on the tennis courts as well. So, over the next month, the big push is just going to be getting that central utility plant dried in and getting the overhead connected and hooked up, so that we can go through our startup processes, and likewise focusing on punch list in a lot of the wings that we're essentially finishing with as we speak. So, any questions about any of those areas? I know it's a lot of.
Changes daily.
It does.
I noticed today, as I was driving down Indiana, that the chain link fence is down. Was that planned to come down that quick?
It was, it was. We've got, it was tied to our sequence of fencing off the retaining walls, so now that the retaining wall permanent fence is in place, we're going to bring our fence down to the end of that and kind of connect it there. So, we'll take use of the permanent fencing up to our tying point, and then we'll just section off our drive-in, so nobody would have access into the site, even though the fence is down. So, we've got to move that back to get the curbs in along Indiana.
And what's going on in the gym areas?
The gym areas, oh, yeah, I must have breezed past that. So, we've got the exterior sheathing in place. We're about eighty percent dried in with the roofs at this point. We've got, we're ready to start on the jip. We're going to start hanging some of the jip on the area L. It's the sequence that we're moving from the big auxiliary jip out to the main jip, so we'll start on the smaller one first, or I call it the large auxiliary jip, the wood floor. We're going to start the jip in there this week on the high sides, now that it's dried in, and then we'll sequence through that. We're trying to push for our wood floor. We've got a lot of things that need to happen. All the windows are ready for measuring. Commercial glass is doing a good job of getting those. They've got the material secured, so we're filling in the openings as quickly as we can. As soon as we can hit our startup for our units, the wood floor is going to be right on its tail, so that's kind of mid-May, end of May right now. So, that's our tightest window for the August timeframe right now, are those gyms. But they're simple finishes. It's just paint and getting the flooring in, so, and the bleachers, so. Any other questions?
That's great.
Awesome.
I think there's some photographs that we have on a slide. No other questions?
Good job, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Keep going.
Don't stop.
No vacation.
Thanks, Jason. All right, that's all I got. What's that? Oh.
She left us.
Do we have any public comments? All right, we'll move on. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. That's Ms. Sharp and Mr. Kimbrough. Please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes. And moving on to regular agenda. Council payable, Mr. Barr.
Thank you, President Flowers. We have attached bill list items for payment of materials, equipment, services, salary, and benefits in both instructional and support areas. Administration recommends the board approve payment of bills amount of fourteen million, two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars, ninety-eight cents.
So moved. Second. Mr. Steele, Mr. Kimbrough, any discussion on council payable?
Once again, good job, Paul and your staff.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Budget adjustments, back to you, Mr. Barr.
Yes, we bring budget adjustments two to three times a year, and I've got a set here that reflects state and federal grants, adjustments in various operating activity budgets that didn't make the original budget last, the work we did last May in June. So, you see the fiscal note, the balances projected impacting these budget adjustments. Administration recommends the board approve the budget adjustments as recommended above and listed by fund on the attached schedule of budget adjustments.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Sharp, Mr. Steele, to approve the budget adjustments. Any discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes. Thank you. Down to discussion items. Ms. Sharp.
You know.
She's sorting.
I'd like to invite everybody to the, wait a second, I'll tell you what I want to invite you to. The Technology Fair that's going to be April twenty-ninth at Irving Elementary. It'll be from five to seven P.M. It is moved from this week to next week. Those are really awesome events to go see, so please do that. If you need the annual report, please get ahold of Kelly Price. I wanted to comment that in the Spyglass, there's a nice article about our famous high school principal. Please pick up the nearest Spyglass, nearest to you. And the Joplin magazine, it was all about our Joplin kit, our Joplin spyglass stories, our class that Mary Crane teaches. So, if you have an opportunity, this entire magazine is all about what Joplin students are doing at our high school. So, and we have, we have a meeting since the, we do all those ribbon cuttings, because we also made the front of the Joplin Chamber of Commerce magazine with our ribbon cuttings. So, please pick up, there's children on the front here, I see Virginia Gormley's child, and I see.
Grandchild.
Grandchild, my bad. Sorry, Virginia. Anyways, but that's really neat, so that is all that I would have for you, Mr. Flowers, but I could make up something if you would like for me to.
That'd be fantastic. Anybody else have anything for discussion?
I'd just like to say that in the past six years, that we've had two wonderful board members that have served this board, and, you know, Phil's leaving us, Jeff's leaving us. You've both brought a lot to this table and brought a lot to this board, and I know on my behalf and the rest, I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome, I appreciate your service.
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service. Jeff, I, we have something on behalf of the board to present you for serving as president of the school board. You did a fantastic job, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Michael. Thank the rest of you very much. I appreciate that.
Oh, I forgot about the volunteer breakfast.
Oh, yeah.
Bright Futures had their volunteer breakfast. That was a very nice, Emily Franz won our, won of our volunteer of the year awards, and also, and I'm going to get the, what was the company?
PCS. PCS phosphate.
Yeah.
Phosphate. Thank you very much to all the Bright Futures businesses and faith-based and social services that help us. That's quite an undertaking, and I really appreciate, as the board does. And then, Paul Barr, can you tell us about your track celebration of bowling?
Yes, we had a fun time. We had, I think, about fifty students that attended from the track this year, and there are a lot of the sponsors, the track coaches attended also, and the teachers with students at the, at the Richard, Carl Richard Bowling Center, and served pizza for lunch, and it was just a great time that morning.
Appreciate you being a track volunteer.
And you as well.
And be sure and sign up to be a track volunteer and a lunch buddy for the upcoming year.
Any other discussion items? No? I'd like to thank everybody for watching at home on Jet fourteen, and I guess at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn Sannie Dot. So moved. It's Mr. Steele and Ms. Sharp. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you all.
All right, we're going to go ahead and call this annual board organization meeting to order. Pat Waldo, Board Secretary, would you please come forward and administer the oath of office to board, new board members?
Yes, we can add the new board members step forward.
He has to be.
Oh.
Yeah, you are, yeah.
That's right. Yep, oh, that's right.
Right up to the front.
You have to swear again.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's okay.
And you can raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director in and for Joplin Schools, County of Jasper, State of Missouri, to the best of my ability, according to law.
I will.
Very good.
Congratulations.
And I will need the signatures for.
That's good.
You dropped mine.
All right, well, it's that time. We need to open the floor for nominations for president.
Ms. Sharp.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Mrs. Sharp to be the board president. Any other nominations for board president? Hearing none, those in favor of Ms. Sharp for board president, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign?
All yours.
Okay, the ayes have it, and Ms. Sannie Sharp is now the board president. Congratulations, Sannie.
Thank you.
Want to slip around here?
Over there, that's his.
Remove your plaque around. If Paul needs to address you, he addresses you properly. Oh, okay. I go by Mr. Steele.
Paul didn't hear you.
Paul.
I go by Mr. Steele.
Carry on.
I'd like to open the floor for nominations for vice president.
Mike Landis.
Second. Are there any other nominations for vice president? Hearing none. I'd like to have a motion to, a vote on Mike Landis for vice president. Randy, restart.
Yes.
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 Congratulations, Mr. Landis. We'll just have a fine time together.
Once again.
Okay. What do you want to do now?
I think, is it time to adjourn? Or we?
I have a check, have checking count.
Checking count.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
If there's changes in the office.
Okay. I'd just like to say that we're going to have an awesome year this year. I appreciate you all taking the time to volunteer to the school district of Joplin, Joplin Schools. We have some exciting things ahead. I welcome our new board members, and feel free to ask any of us questions. Don't ever feel that you are asking a silly question, because there are no silly questions, so just, my door is always open, my phone, my texts, whatever, as well as my fellow board members.
She didn't answer her phone.
So.
I may or may not give you the right answer.
But she will make up something.
She'll give us one.
Yeah.
Anyway, she answers her phone.
So, yeah, so. The best time to contact me would be anytime after eleven P.M. and before three A.M. Those are good times. Before eight A.M. in the morning, not so much. Are we ready yet? That's about all the filler I have.
Did you need a motion for checking signatures?
Pat, do you have a, is there a separate action?
Yes, I do. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Changing the signatures on everything.
Thank you.
Seeing no further business, I adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome.